Order. First item for discussion will be awarding a bid for the Church Street Utility and Drainage Improvements for the Utilities and Public Works Department. Who we got here for that? Mr. Peterson, are you gonna talk about that?
Well, I mean, certainly I can.
I didn't add that. Who did add that?
Kim.
Kim did. Oh, okay.
And start off, I have requested for it to be put on the work session because it's, you're right at 5.2 million dollars project. And when I was trying to go through budget-wise, I was short 1.6 million dollars. So, I just figured I needed to bring it to y'all to let's figure out how we would fund this. And so, maybe these guys can start off to talk about the project.
Well, and the project is one of the initial parts of the transmission upgrade requirements that we had in the report from Goodwill and Kaywood way back on the south side of town, everything that collects and goes through Church Street from Fells to the plant now, and upgrading that transmission capability. And as we started looking at it, we looked at the stormwater system that's basically from maybe the middle of the block between Parrot Avenue and Delamar, going out to the outfall line that is on Oak Street, just west of Church Street, in pretty bad shape. And so, we looked at putting the stormwater outfall system in the project. We have a gas regulator station at the wastewater plant we want to upgrade, and we want to put a plastic gas main along Church Street with this project so we can begin our gas cast iron main replacement program. And then we looked at the water system on Church Street, and it was kind of broken up in different parts of the distribution system. So, we felt like one continuous water system from Oak to Fells would be appropriate while we're in there. And so, when we started looking at all the different pieces of the infrastructure we needed to address, it grew to the point where we'd spend a lot more money than what I would have originally guessed or budgeted. And I think the plans are well-prepared, and, you know, I think the prices we got were reasonable for what is expected by today's standards. And I hate that the money was over from what we had hoped it would be, but it seemed like that's a trend that we're gonna have to start getting used to because every time we bid something, it seems like it's higher. From the library renovation to the Bayou Drive to this one, and, you know, and the lift station on Mobile Street was higher than what we thought.
So, it went from 3.6 to 5.2, is that right? Or is 5.2 plus 1.6?
So, what, you know, was originally in this capital plan, and that's what I use to do projections with and what we use for budget, but my understanding on this project, the drainage, the drainage piece is above the utility improvements that was added to the project.
That would be public works.
So, the public work. So, that's what I'm really sure is gonna be on the public work side. I'm a little, I'm a little short from what we had budget for this year, but this project will go across fiscal years from this year and to next year. So, I feel fine with how much water sewer is gonna contribute gas. That's in this plan, but it's the piece when we added in this project, my understanding is when we put this out for bid, we also, while we're there doing this work, we added drainage improvements, which will be a public work side. And so, that's the general fund side.
Was the gas main, the replacement, always a part of this improvement?
It was something that we were trying to plan ahead. You know, we were looking at different models from the engineering firm we had working. But the reality was, once we started looking at all the other infrastructure we were doing in there, we thought, well, this is the time to start. And what we're gonna wind up with is a four-inch, basically a four-inch trunk line that'll go down Church Street, and will come off at each intersection beyond the Church Street right-of-way so that we can come back into that location and extend further east and west, basically, as we start moving in other locations with cast iron gas mains.
Yeah, Council, y'all have questions on it real quick?
Well, to Jack's question, was it, is it 1.6 above original or 1.6 above?
It is, it is above on what they budgeted in the utilities.
But that's, well, how much of it is public works? Do we know?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Public works.
But that includes almost every utility, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
And what we did was, we took the streets and the paving requirements within the streets, and we took each individual utility, and we prorated the street cost based on the weighted average of each utility. So, it's spread across all of them as equally as we knew how to do it.
About 1.4 storm sidewalks.
So, that is the overage.
Okay.
Yes. So, how many, so we take the rest of this year and the stormwater part of it. Do we know how much that would take? Or would you know?
And that's, kind of, just talking about this, one of the processes that we did in when this project was starting.
Fred. Oh, thank you. Was, as you know, utilities have the capability of photographing, videoing all enclosed pipes. So, part of this due diligence is starting this survey and looking at what we had in these right-aways. We did videotape the drainage. And basically, from, from about Delamar all the way to the outfall at the head of the gully there at Oak Street and Church, where the road goes down to Sutri Van, just on self-failure, we've got inverts of metal pipes that are completely eroded away just due to age, undersizing. The modeling demonstrated. And the issue was, is that to, to dig and to place these new utilities, we were gonna be digging right adjacent to existing drainage. And the chances of being able to maintain that drainage or just do partial repairs, the engineers came back, says, there's just no fixing this. It's gotta be upsized. It has to be replaced. The materials are no longer serviceable. And when you look at, we do have a reoccurring flooding part problem on the northwest corner of Church and Magnolia. This would address that. And of course, you know, part of the alley project is that we are putting drainage in there for the first time. It's gotta have to connect to something, and the system that's there is not capable of handling that, in a conduit, that water. And the other component that really kind of shocked us is by, by requirements, when we do improvements, whether they're utilities or road working or drainage, we have to address ADA complacency. And I think that that cost was, what, $147,000 of the total project?
Just wanna schedule that.
With that said, the worst-case scenario is that cost will be incurred over both fiscal year 2020 and 2021 because we have, I think, an 18-months project schedule. As I told Kim this, can't guarantee it. We generally, projects never stay right within our optimistic schedule of perfect weather and no surprises. So, you know, I think that it's probably a safe assumption that part of this expense would occur in fiscal year 2022 as well. But what, you know, I think you gotta plan for the worst-case scenario, that we have a great contractor, great weather, and we stay on schedule. And it would be incurred all in the two fiscal years, this year and next. I think what Richard and I, I think the engineer is very much in accord on, is that it would be just irresponsible and not wise to have that road closed and dig up and not address the drainage while we're there. The opportunity cost to come back at some future time would be much more expensive. And to answer the mayor's question, our assumption and what our goal would be, it would be a phased project because we know that the contractor at certain times of years just has to get out of there and leave the roads open for when it's Montegra and Arts and Crafts Festival and things of that nature. So, the estimate would be that they would start at the low end, which is at the sewer treatment plant, and there would be no drainage work done until they got out of the plant and at Oak Street, and then would just come up block by block. So, the cost of those public works-related improvements would be spread throughout the length of the project. There's not just gonna be, well, that won't be incurred until the end or anything like that. It'll be as it moves linear along the project extends.
I certainly think it makes sense to do it all at once instead of reopen it up. And you feel, RP, I'll call you, you feel confident that the bids were in line with what would be?
I think they met what the industry standard is today. I think so. And Steve Delahoney's here, who's the engineer director for this, he can speak probably better too. His cost estimate was within just, and I can't, I don't wanna speak for Steve, but it was very close to what the bids came in at of the Lobea.
Okay. There's Steve. Steve, do you mind?
Sure. We did have, we did have a competitive bid, obviously, our two little vendors.
Yeah, see, they were neck and neck.
Yes, sir. And so, they go through the project the same way. And obviously, as we started, you know, discussing with both Richard Johnson and Mr. Peterson, we kind of went through this when we were getting results of the video, because originally, our stormwater improvements were gonna be from Magnolia to the outfall. We were just gonna connect it to the outfall on Oak Street. Well, we found out the outfall on Oak Street has its own issues. And so, that was, we talked about that with Richard. And I said, well, this obviously would be a potential EWP project in the future, which that's the NRCS projects that typically the city tries to, I guess, you know, incorporate in some of their repairs. So, and like Richard said, they had a, they had a project that was coming off the, behind, you know, behind the parking deck. And so, we had to come back and connect into it. Of course, that was inadequate. So, when we did the stormwater model, the actual first drop of water is over there by the, just on the east side of the park, in that parking lot, you know, behind the dance studio. So, you can imagine that, that first drop of water ends up in that outfall. So, we got a little bit concerned. Of course, the first budget, you know, I was still telling Richard, I mean, we figured a 36-inch outfall pipe connecting to that 60 on Oak Street, and actually, our, you know, our outfall pipe, the last connection of pipe is 48-inch pipe, which is significant. But that's not, when we designed it, where our price starts running a little bit is when we, from north of Magnolia, all the, all the collection system ends up in the sewer line, ends up into the transmission line. There's, there's no 8-inch collection system. It goes into, isn't that right, Jay? It goes into one main, which is the pressure main that we're trying to rehabilitate. Well, those laterals that are connected on that transmission line are critical to serving those houses, right? Well, one of the, one of the other has to be deeper than the other because we have to reconnect and have to cross over. So, so that segment from Oak Street up to Magnolia, it got a little pricey. Because we were doing, we were trying to convey that, we were trying to put that road back together as a residential road, because there's nothing but residents on there. So, we, as, we were trying to squeeze that road down from a 24-foot pavement section to a, to, yeah, that's right, that's right. So, make it more residential. Well, our issue that we came up through there is we had a lot of conflicts crossing the new laterals into the old system, if you follow what I'm saying. So, you have a big storm sewer pipe, you got an 18-inch transmission line, and then you got a re-establishment of laterals into an old transmission line. So, we got a lot of stuff going in at one place. And so, we got a little depth issue on there. So, and that, that run the cost up a little bit, too.
Does any of this?
Plus, our storm, our stormwater was never gonna go past Magnolia until the videos started coming in. And actually, the corner Magnolia and in Church, it was a complete collapsed line, and hence the flooding problem.
Does any of this qualify for the Restore Act funds? I keep hearing all these millions of dollars and this, that. I'm still waiting to find out where we're gonna spend that 11 million.
Now, the Restore Funds, and I, we are gonna improve 10 lift stations with the Restore Funds. We're gonna look at and line and do some lateral reinstatement, manhole repair, in an area of town that basically runs from Valanta over to about Fells and then up north toward Ingleside. And that quadrant of the wastewater system, which a lot of that comes to the plant by gravity.
Okay.
And that's where the bulk of what we feel like our inflow issues are. We're gonna address that. And then, then another third of the Restore Act was gonna retrofit the, the side stream storage vessels that we bid but rejected. I don't wanna talk about that in just a minute. But they'll install the pumps, the blowers, and the auto-control units for those vessels that should be in place by the time the Restore Act gets here. So, the Restore Act's gonna do 10 lift stations. And then, there is a PDF version and map of the, all of those areas that we're gonna address with the Restore Act funding as part of the application. I had an opportunity Friday to look at a stainless steel vessel. And Jack, you asked me when we first started about stainless steel, and I've done a little bit more research on that at this point in time. And, and I've looked at a stainless steel vessel, a chicken plant that's in Union Springs, Alabama. And I'm just convinced at this point, based on the conditions of the wear and tear of that vessel versus other ones that I've seen in other locations that are the powder-coated steel, that I just feel a lot better about a stainless steel vessel for these things. And the longevity and the maintenance cycle, or the life of the maintenance requirements will be far better than what I think we would get with powder-coated steel. So, 316 stainless, to answer your question, I'm looking, and I may have an option, I may have an option for 317, just because I think anything we can do is, but I'm working with some people that are contractors and project managers for these vessels, and I'm getting a lot of good input from those two. So, I'd like to start to prepare to rebid that and see where we are. But the Restore Act, and from talking to Amy Hunter, I think, Amy Hunter and Bethany Craft, we described, Jessica and I sat down and described all of what we were trying to do with the Restore Act. And then, they're pretty much on board with it. And the application is made. But now, the Restore Act for the wastewater rehabilitation work goes to a Gulf Coast Council that services all five states. And so, the other four states had their applications in place.
Before us.
Before Alabama had their applications ready. And so, we're kind of in line, waiting on the review of.
Basically, the bucket one was the Treasury, bucket three is this process. But we are probably in the front of at least our side. I mean, yeah, our part of it.
But I think there's like 40 or so applications in front of ours. But, so, we're in a holding pattern, but that doesn't mean that, you know, we should be able to see some of that fairly quickly.
Thanks for that reminder. I mean, we don't, we don't live that every day like you guys do. And with all that you have going on, and Mayor knows a lot more about it than we do, it just overwhelms us. So, when I hear those, and I start thinking, do we have dollars for that?
Where's the money coming? But the, I wanted to clarify, too, that the 1 million, it's 11 million that's going to sewer, you know, projects. But the 1 million of that 11 is for a study and hopefully, solution to prevent SSOs on the whole eastern shore. So, that is separate from that.
But isn't it fair to say, in defense of the city, though, with these SSOs, and we get notifications, we get email notifications, a lot of that is not due to a failing sewage collection system. A lot of it is due to an electrical failure, a pump failure, some other, you know, something that's man-made is just prone to fail. Is that, is that fair to say?
Richard can speak more to this, but all the ones I've seen since, I assume this role, have been mechanical failures.
Every one you've seen since you had a role?
Radar, radar went out or something like that, and caused it. But those are the ones I've seen, but, you know, we obviously, Richard has the experience.
And the issue with the rehabilitation of the wastewater system is an ongoing process. I mean, somebody drives a tractor with a box blade behind it, and they hit a manhole ring and cover off of the manhole structure. And then, they've created a void. And you don't know that void's there until the next drain event. And then, and you don't know how much water you're gonna happen to be draining into that location because you don't know where it is in the drainage system.
But I think it's, but your point, you're making my point even more so, is that people get really upset and think we're not trying to fix these things, when in fact, it doesn't matter if you have a brand spanking new manhole cover there. If somebody knocks the thing off.
That's right.
And creates a void, it could happen whether it's 50 years old or if it's a day old.
And it's not that we have contractors that would do this, but sometimes they do like to drain their construction site quicker in order to get back to work. And then, they can lift manhole lids off and allow water to get into them, too. And, you know, I've seen that before. There's all kind of ways that people can devise to get stormwater into the wastewater system.
Right.
But we have to be diligent about attacking those problems as quick as we find them, too. And, you know, that's one thing we do need. But, but the petrified clay system that we have is old, and it is brittle, and there are problems with it.
And we know we got infiltration everywhere.
And we got some. So, but.
And I will add to that, because one of the first preliminary scopes was to see the sustainability of the existing transmission line. And Richard, they came up with the idea to re-line that VC system. And that's the new, that's gonna be the new collection system. Instead of keeping the old 8-inch online, the, the old 15-inch and 12-inch is the new collection system, and it'll be completely aligned. That was a, that was a, I'm not saying it was an expensive venture, but it was a good idea to go ahead and do it.
We're in the business of re-lining the systems anyway. And here again, if we're gonna go to the trouble of getting into the right-of-way, closing it, digging up most of it, you know, it just makes more sense to me to do it all. And that was just one of the items that we need to be doing, too.
You put new lines in where you're digging up, though, right?
Not, not on the gravity collection system. We're just gonna line those mains with the Kierden Place Pipe Lineing System.
And they're large enough to hold the?
Yes. Yeah.
It's a new 18 for the transmission, but the, the old transmission is gonna be utilized as the collection system.
I got you.
So, and, but it'll be rehabilitated because it'll be lined, which was part of another consultant's contract to line the system. So, it's, it's part of ours. And that was an expense as well.
One other thing I'm not sure of is what is our time and requirement to award the contract in the documents? Was it 45 days, 60 days?
Around 60 days.
Okay. I don't know where we are in that.
So, Kim, what does that do to us financially if it spans over two budget years?
Well, so, your, your storm drainage.
And I know potentially three, but just call it two.
Yeah. Your storm drainage was right at 800,000. Then you have a sidewalks, you know, which, you know, rounding up 200,000. So, there's a million dollars that's over the next year and a half. You either have to go into, you know, dedicate some reserves for this, to let this on this project. I think, I think the sewer, the water, the gas, we're fine because that is in some of these, you know, these numbers that we already have. After talking to Richard last week, some of the projects that I put in this five-year projections, I didn't realize that those projects were gonna have some BP money. So, I have some revenue sources that I didn't have in my projections that I did several months back. So, I think for the utilities, we're good. It's, it's going back to the general fund on storm.
But stormwater is included in impact fees, too, for public works?
Yes. But we, so, right now, for this year, that's your resurfacing.
I was just thinking next year.
Yeah. For next year, to be able to use the impact fees, that's coming in around 250,000. So, we'll be able to use that. And you could be able to use that. And the next year, if we think it's gonna go over into '22. So, that's a half a million.
It sounds like if you've got 60 days, I mean, end of September, we're already done with this year.
And that's kind of what I talked with Ken and the mayor about, was that we've had a pretty good, good run of resurfacing. This will be, ended up, resurfacing, basically, we'll have brand-new Church Street. This is over. So, we'll, for, you know, I think we can go two years for going as impact fees for generally resurfacing and directing toward this project to at least take a little of this thing out. It didn't cover it all, but it is applicable in that case.
Council, if they're comfortable, and it sounds like we've got a lot of eyes on the numbers, I mean, it makes sense, you know, if the numbers make sense and you're comfortable that we got good bids for what we're doing, I think it makes sense to do it. And we can talk about, you know, robbing Peter to pay Paul later. But I guess, so you need to know something soon about awarding a bid.
Yes.
If we're comfortable with this plus-up, and I know, Jimmy, you're getting in on the tail end of this, it's a 1.6 million out of a 3.6 million estimate. But it does include a lot of public works tasks or detail that wasn't included originally in the, in the estimates. I get all that right?
Normally, scope creep is bad. And I think in this case, it actually will give us something that's better.
Well, in the long term, is if you had to go back and redo, you know, three or four projects, you're probably looking at, you probably, you might be saving a couple of million dollars. You probably are, probably at least that much.
I would think so.
Yeah. So, we're just gonna be able, from, from the general fund side, because it looks like on the general fund side project, we're looking at 1.5 million of this total is a general fund project. So, where will we get that money? Which, we can get a half a million of it from impact fees over the next two years. It's where we wanna pull other money. Do you wanna pull, you know, is that an option to come out of reserves?
Exactly. It's always an option. I mean, it's always an option as opposed to even borrow from yourself and pay it back as opposed to paying interest.
I keep hearing impact fees. We gotta be careful that money is spent where that impact fee was collected. I mean, we can't just arbitrarily pull money from an impact fee account for a water transmission down, down Church Street.
That's why only 250 is available and not.
Yeah. I mean, it's, it's stormwater for public works, but, you know, not the.
In the, in the law, it's allowed in drainages, so.
Because that's where it all ends up. I mean, it would be hard to define, I think, that area.
And there's been lawsuits around the state about improper use of impact fees. I'm just making sure.
This is about water, I think, and where it all ends up, so.
And Councilman Brown, that is, I must admit that when, when our neighborhood stations written, they did write a fraud, which has been official. But when you consider redevelopment downtown, which did collect the impact fees, that redevelopment covered a lot more than per the surface, and thus, the drainage system that existed 20 years ago is inadequate today, but we're able to run on. So, I think that that is a justifiable that we have to upsize in the place due to the impacts of growth. And so, I think, and the enablement stations pretty much allows that. It's stated very clearly. So, I think we're safe there. And, you know, just as we can resurface downtown streets with impact dollars because those folks that moved into the new neighborhoods come downtown. So, it's all the way.
Now, this is, this is gonna keep Church Street at the same width, though. You're not narrowing it right, I was gonna say. Because it is considered part of the CBD.
Correct. Now, the only, only place we're choking it down is the residential corridor from Magnolia to Oak. Because there is, the thoroughfare there is a high-speed component with people that try to route around.
Well, but I'm still looking at it as a CBD. If you change that streetscape of a, I think that may even be B2 zoned, is it not?
I'll have to check that. Councilman, the good news is there's, the street is overly wide for travel lanes, but not wide enough for onto the parking. So, all we're doing is we're giving it a two-foot asphalt diet to preserve those large oak trees that are on the west side, because there was no way to get the new drainage, new outfall in at the same width, because of course, the curb line dictates where you pick up water. So, the curb on the west side is just gonna move in two feet. That's correct.
Two feet to the east.
Yeah, I understand. And I understand there on the roadway, residential areas. But technically, it's no different than Section Street being a row. I mean, it is, it is, I think, the CBD.
But the entire width, the 44-foot width, including the side, payload parking, is nothing changed. Actually, the striking is, I didn't, actually, we added a couple more ADA, and a couple loads on section.
And preserved bike lanes, the whole.
Oh, yeah. And we extended the bike lane from, from Parrot Avenue to Magnolia.
We got enough to get us through this budget year? I mean, they, will they even break ground by October?
They, they will defer beyond Arts and Crafts, obviously.
Oh, so it'll be, but it would be that soon?
Yes, sir. But they, if they were to break ground in the April period, the latter part of April, it would, it would not even, it would be in the, in the treatment plant up to Oak. And they would probably work on the outfall next, which is, is gonna be, it would particularly pick those areas of those periods of dry months to build that outfall, since that's gonna be, we got so much stormwater that comes through there.
So, Council, do you want us to get this on the agenda? May that. May I?
I'm probably moving forward, but I think we need, you know, might need a special work session called just to address this. I mean, that's a lot of four point six million general fund. We gotta get that money somewhere. I don't, I don't feel comfortable just saying, yeah, let's move ahead and then not address it and then.
Well, I think we can address, well, I hate to say it, but if, if we're gonna do it, we always have the reserve to follow if we have to borrow from ourselves. I mean, we always have.
And we had talked a couple times about having, considering some type of a line of credit either for the utility expansion or just as, as a rainy day. And I think we should have something like that in place so that we're not gonna hit a point where we have to stop cold turkey.
It'd be nice, but I, you know, Kim, it would take Kim to call up a local bank to get something like that, to get quotes a, a, a week.
Yeah, that, that wouldn't take long and, and that-
I'm not saying stop it, I just think we should do that.
We, we should do it while, while we're in the middle of this.
Right. And, and the one thing that we could do on this is the utilities start paying, they're shared first, and then that gives us into next year, next fiscal year to tap into the impact fees. And then I could be able to look at, but I do wanna bring up that I do think we need a line of credit, especially when we get more into the, um, the restore money. Because right now, um, on the project that we currently have, um, we've spent over, you know, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars and I still don't know at what point, when we're gonna get that reimbursement. So right now, based on the grants recommendation, I have a separate bank account for the, um, federal grants, but I'm borrowing, you know, instead of separate funds. So I'm borrowing from general fund to fund those, waiting on the check to come back. But there's gonna be a point with these large projects, when, um, we get into a large project, I won't have that cash flow to be able to do that, you know. And, and a line of credit would help with that and it wouldn't cost as much, you know, when we get into these large projects.
That's it, so.
Yeah.
So Jimmy and I'll come talk to you about, and get, come up with some ideas to, uh, look, looking down the road. We can do that soon. Would you do that, Jimmy?
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. All right. Okay. Item two, discussion on bidding installation of natural gas mains.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Dad, it's not raining. Uh, Rick, if I may, can I mention something about Church Street real quick? That gas line that we got now actually does not feed via down Church Street. It comes off of section, feeds around Bancroft, back by Honey Bay Hands. That gas line is responsible for feeding all the west side of town. So right now the station, the sewer plant is overloaded. So that gas line, when we tie that bait gate back in, will free up all the west side. That's one of the big reasons for the gas line starting off there. It's all low pressure and that, that station just, just tremendously feeds. It's, it's just way overloaded. Just, just to mention that. The, what we wanna talk about tonight is trying to see if we can just get some blessings on maybe sending out for some bids on contracting out gas mains into new subdivisions. Um, we're tremendously overloaded. We ran forty-eight thousand feet last year ourself in-house. That took us away from all of our mains. We got my guys are working Saturdays just to keep up. This, I'm gonna hand these around, this is just the subdivisions that is on the books. This is not what we're actually working with as of right now. And, and also this is just in the planning jurisdiction of Fairhope. That does not include Spanish Fork, Stapleton. We still got some subdivisions on thirty-one to get into, on Grace, Magnolia, rain plantations. We got about two more phases, probably at least ten thousand foot each one of them. So that's what we're looking at coming forward. So we're hoping that we can just relieve some of us so we can get on our infrastructure and get guys off of there. As of right now, we've already ran approximately twelve thousand feet this year so far ourself in-house. And right now we got thirty-eight services on the books just this past two weeks to run. I do, and I do appreciate the new help, the new hires that we've had. Um, I've had five, but these guys are new. They, I cannot send them out on crews by themselves. So we're having to put them with somebody for at least a year or so to learn. So splitting up my crews, I've got them split up. I had them in twos, now at least I got three crews. So it's helping, but it's still, we just, we cannot keep up with these subdivisions.
How many feet did you say y'all were running this year, twelve?
We so far overran twelve thousand, approximately twelve thousand feet.
And I'm just adding this up real quick, it's like eighty-three thousand?
Eighty-three. And, and some of them, now that's not going to be this year, we know that.
Right.
But that is on the books, that, the subdivisions that, that are, that's coming just in our jurisdiction, planted jurisdiction, not counting, like I said, the county.
And what about the line replacement on the, the old, um, old pipe that you are doing? Is it, I can't remember that. Was that being outsourced or that's, okay?
Yes, sir, it's outsourced. So that's gonna, you know, we're gonna have to contend with that one for sure.
Yeah, if you had somebody to outsource this, that's eighty-three thousand feet I just ran it, if I, if I had it right.
Eighty-three thousand.
Eighty, yeah, so if you had someone help with that, I know it may not be all done in a year, but, I mean, do you have enough people to put in the services once you do run all that? And what are you gonna do about that?
Yes, sir, we, we, right now, we're, we're pretty good on services. My guys, a lot of these subdivisions are close together, um, so it's, they can go in sometimes, put in three a day. So it's pretty remarkable. And then, and still, you know, we're still doing some weekends and we're, like, these thirty-five that we got on the books now, they'll probably knock them out between Saturday and, and next Saturday, um, they'll knock them out. Because most of the services average sixty feet. And with the subdivisions, they're close, nothing's in the way. And the mains by contractor is pretty simple and a fast process. By us doing it, we're in there, we run five hundred feet, a thousand feet, we get pulled off to fix a leak. We go in there and run five hundred feet, a thousand feet, we get pulled off to run a service. We, it's just, it's a constant battle. We're not getting in them, they're starting to build houses. And, and then we end up having to do more, um, repair than we do anything, you know, just to catch up.
When you put this out to bid, will you just, would you just ask for a price per linear foot? Is that how you do it?
Yes, sir.
And you just send them where, would you tell them where they go from there?
And draw in as to where they put the gas main. So, so what we're trying to do on that is, and we've talked back and forth with Mike, but I would like to supply the materials and just have them do the labor of installing it, not making the gas line hot. We'll make the gas line hot and that keeps them from being qualified. All they would have to be is be qualified to do the fusion part of the pipe. Everything else, OQ would all be on us and the responsibility because we had actually put the gas on, on the pipe itself. So that would be them installing the fittings, installing the pipe, air testing it, giving me proof of the air tests and then we'd make the gas line hot.
When would you, when would you start catching up on things?
Pretty much, I mean, it, really and truly, there's two subdivisions, North Hills and Fairhope is really is a must of getting somebody to help us do that. They're, they're building one house in there right now. That's it. Nine thousand feet of pipe's gotta go in there. They've already got the curbs in. That would help us tremendously just getting that one started. So just talking to a few contractors, um, they would not have to be guaranteed how many feet, they would like to be guaranteed a year, like a two-year, three-year, if we needed them, to pick them and not have to go back out on bids again. And, and that's hard to.
Sure they want that, I don't know if they like that or not.
I understand that, that's just-
I may tell him, uh, that's no. I was gonna say, well, Michael's kinda agreeing with me. I'm kinda like, I'm locking into somebody and they going in and do a, you know.
And, and I totally agree, I don't like that either. And, and other than that, just doing it by the foot, most of them is gonna give you a price. Right now it's costing us, um, anywhere between four and eight dollars a foot for us to put it in. But that's also including all the materials, including the tractor time, employees. And, and that has a lot to do, the four and eight dollars I know is a big difference, but that has a lot to do with going back and forth, how many hours, man-hours I put in, because we calculate the man-hours, the material, and then divide that out to get the cost per foot. So if they have to get called out, or they get in there and, and have to come back, come back and it's raining, it's just, so the hours make it longer. And so that changes our price a little bit. But that's about average, what we're running the past two years is anywhere from four to eight dollars a foot.
If you had a, um, you know, you could even, you could even select, maybe even, you know, if you had to, multiple contractors, if you needed to put, put it in simultaneously, if you got it, I don't know if it had to be the exact same price or, you know, two low bidders, I don't know how that, that, that long works on that, but, um.
What I'm used to seeing, um, when we get back where it came from, is you had a contract and you put it in the contract where we can ask them to ramp up or down depending on our work, and what we were, what we were giving them. So we'd start off, we'd say, okay, we need one crew, but we reserve the right if we get a bunch of new subdivisions in to ask you to bring in another crew.
Right, if they could do that. As I look at this as, uh, you know, time is money.
Yes.
The quicker you get a customer, the quicker you're selling gas, the quicker you're, you're making money on it, so.
And that's our problem now is we're just so far behind trying to get in there and then try to come back and do the services and do the cleanup, it's just, and, and back and forth. And we're starting our leak survey right now, so I really need a crew full-time to go behind them and repair any leaks that they find now instead of pulling somebody off, putting them back, pulling somebody off.
I mean, and then the other, you know, the other option we always have, we put it out to bid. We don't have to accept the bids. If it comes back and it's ten dollars a foot, you would think of four to eight with materials and that's with non-efficient use of time. So you're telling me it ought to be, I don't know, four dollars or less a foot, maybe five dollars or less?
And, and I really don't have to-
Something like that, I don't wanna put numbers in, in people that are watching this, Ed. It should be somewhere on the low end of that or lower. And if it come back and it's some high number, we, we have enough engineers here to know that what it, what it should cost.
And we've had, we've actually installed it as low as two dollars a foot ourself, but like I said, it just depends on what time we can get in there and get out of there, upwards to nine dollars a foot, just depends on what we have to do.
That would definitely free up some materials crews to get this main and stuff done. Once we start getting the cast iron main, we can just draw it up, we can start getting work on that.
Again, and then the other, uh, uh, way you could do is you could do it in blocks. You know, you could do it in, I don't know, ten thousand foot, fifteen thousand foot, some, something like that.
Or guarantee a minimum amount of-
Guarantee, you know what I worry about? You know, you don't wanna get that, that, to quote the commercial, that's just okay and then you wish, you wish you didn't have them for two more years.
Right.
And we need to do a one-year contract, give us one year, then worst case scenario, if we were into just okay, you know, like you said, one year.
Yeah, well, if they're doing forty-eight thousand a year and you have somebody strictly doing that and they can do fifty, I'd hate to put in, I'd hate to know we put in fifty thousand foot of pipe and we could just stop it shorter now. I'd bite it up.
We're gonna inspect it. We were, um, we're working on some standards that they'll have to meet as far as depth and compaction and the vetting for the pipe and the pressure tests and everything like that, so.
Location.
Location. So we're trying to alleviate a lot of that by having our guys before they enter, enter like you turn, before they heat it up with gas to be able to look at it and know that it meets our specs.
Give your city a lot of outs. Give it, give us outs. And when we're stuck in something that we regret, and, 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 you know, I know it's not the hardest job in the whole world when you do it every day, but still, you know, we don't want some money coming in and getting a rush because they're getting paid by the foot.
The biggest thing is the fusion, yeah, just, and, and we'll most likely have somebody there to look at their, their actual fusion, but.
You got any insight on that, Robert?
I don't know, I'll source them.
Okay, if you go put it out for bid, like I said, we've always got the option to reject them. Y'all have a problem with that?
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, item three, discussion of safety and barricades for parades with the police department, community affairs department, public works, and the Baldwin EMA. Brought everybody here for this.
I know, it's a whole committee meeting. Uh, except for EMA is about to have to step out because his son has got baseball practice and I promised him that he didn't have to stay. So Zach, thank you, we'll have him back another time. I left the clicker.
Yes, waiting on Jessica, I do, I do wanna give a preamble that from the public works scope of things, we had a phenomenal Mardi Gras season, uh, really no incidents. As you all know, that, that the first Saturday was chamber of commerce weather and the crowds were, came out for the dog parade and stayed and grew. And, but overall, even on this past Monday, the weather did not behave leading up to the parade, but, uh, lo and behold, it didn't rain a drop where I was and the crowds were good and the parade went on. And, and overall, from an operational standpoint, so on, on the support, uh, it went well. I will tell you that the, the crowds that first Saturday were real tough for setting up the main event because they kinda had picked their spot and we would ask folks to move so we could put a barricade or stretch a cable. And by the time you turn around to get the barricade or cable, they'd move right back to their spot. So, uh, we, we cut it close having the routes, uh, contained by the time folks rolled at six-thirty. But one of the things that we sat down after the fact and just kinda discussed areas that we can improve, concerns that we had, things to plan for next year and everything else. And, and I think we are in accord and, and if you didn't know, Mr. Hood from our EMA director has chosen Fairhope to, to move to and to raise his family and he participated and, and he had some observations from a, a crowd management, crowd safety concerns and shared those with us. And, and he has a background in, in inaugural events and things of that nature where large crowds assemble. But I, I think we, we came to the conclusion that our greatest challenge is maintaining a safe and secure event by keeping our visiting public separate from the active parade route. That, that is the challenge that we are facing today. And I, I kinda looked up what the definition of a barrier, barrier was, and it's a fence or other obstacle that prevents movement or access. And we've got some challenges with the barrier hybrid system that we're kinda using today. And we just wanted to kinda sit down and, and, and talk to you and, and share with you concerns and opportunities and, and looking ahead and planning and, and trying to ensure our Mardi Gras continue to be successful, to keep growing, to be a, a, a big attraction in our community, but also be safe for not only our citizens and visitors alike. And one of the things I did, because I had a son and a, a band from another high school that marched in all three parades, and he said, Dad, how long is that parade route? And I didn't know the answer to that. So we actually, uh, took GIS and, and mapped our parade route and actually delineated what was cable barriers, what was barricades and otherwise. And, uh, just from my fun geeky statistical things, if, if you didn't know, if you'll go to the next slide, PD estimated crowd attendance, um, and-
It's probably at record, um, record attendance for at least the first two, the, the third report were about average.
And that increase for those first two years, probably about twenty to thirty percent year on year.
We averaged twenty to thirty percent on the MMOR parade and twenty to thirty percent increase on the KLR.
So, and then, so to speak specifically to the MMOR, so, um, I'm sure all of you have been down for that parade. This year we met, we went to the effort to meet with MMOR the week after their parade to talk through any deficiencies that we may have seen. And one of their main requests was a fully barricaded route for what they do, for safety, not just for pedestrian safety, but also for safety for our visitors who are there. Um, a lot of times people get in the dogs' faces, you know, you don't really wanna get in a dog's face, that's, it's very dangerous, there's a lot of issues there. So, you know, they had that request for a fully barricaded route. But we also had local merchants who have reached out to us, little merchants from downtown, that really noticed the increased crowds and the increased issues with safety breaches and our safety problems. So this was my first parade season to actually be there and to be pulling barricades with these guys. And you know that if they're not locked, somebody's gonna come right back behind you and move it when they're ready to, to get down that road. And, and that happened to me multiple times and it gave me a, a good view of what they and it gave me a good view of what they have to deal with every time we have a parade. Richard did a great thing and has, has got some.
So, so if inquiring minds want to know whoever laid this route out is, must have been engineering hard because it's actually thirteen thousand two hundred feet is the pattern that they follow. Now, I understand it, you know, it switches back on itself, but that's two point five miles. So my trumpet player marched seven point five miles in the three parades that, that the band participated in Fairhope. But since the parade does turn on itself and shares the same several roads twice or parts of several roads, the actual barrier perimeter is fourteen thousand nine hundred and forty feet, which is two point eight three miles of perimeter of, of that map that you saw. And at this point in time, we protect approximately, well, exactly sixty-eight hundred and one feet of that with single, single cable that is drawn at about thirty-two to thirty-six inches of height off of grade. The, of the rest of the route is protected by steel barricade, which is approximately eight thousand one hundred and thirty-eight feet, one point five four miles. But our, because of the number of barricades we have, we have typically in those sections, we link three or four barricades together and leave a four-foot gap. And, and when you think of the term barricade, when you put a gap in it, you, you, it's really not a barricade anymore. So, and at this point in time, the city owns eight hundred and forty barricades with trailers, which, which would make a continuous barrier of seven, of six thousand seven hundred and twenty feet. So those are kind of your statistics of where we are today. And we kind of talked about what, what our, we think the objectives have to be. One, we've got to separate pedestrians from floats and vehicular traffic. That, that is just a, a must. And, and as we've seen stories in the news, we realize that that's a challenge even with the best of systems. We feel we've got to eliminate the, the single cable barrier. For the little kids, it's not a barrier. They, they can dart out directly under it and, and, and we just, we need to have something that, that truly does give a, a separation there. Our goal is to fully enclose parade route employing interlocked steel barricades. The, the ones we own, they, they will lock together. And once they are locked, you can't, if they're locked to the next to the next, you can't unlock them. I mean, it, it's a very simple mechanism that works very well. One of the things that we discussed is that you still have to have designated crossing areas and that would probably be at every major intersection of parade route. And part of the operational change is that when the parade begins or right before that, that public works personnel would be assigned to every one of those crossings and they would man that crossing. So when the parade passes and is out of sight, you can let the traffic of pedestrians flow safely and then close that up and man it while the parade is back in sight and passes again. No cost to that. Those personnel are already there on the scene waiting to clean up. So it's just, it's just utilizing existing forces. And then we realize that whatever we do, we've got to minimize impacts to businesses and residents along the parade route due to the introduction and use of interlocked barricades, which is going to mean a little, very conscientious housekeeping and storage and removal between parades and, and to, to make that a minimum. And the other thing that, that, that I know PD has, has made a goal is to work on establishing vehicle mitigation barriers at, at major approaches to the downtown area where we hold these parades and events. We are susceptible unfortunately to a terrorist attack of a person in large vehicle that doesn't, there's no preventing from them coming in and, and could cause a, a real issue. And believe it or not, there's a company that has invented a, a vehicle mitigation barrier that's very effective. There's videotape, video we can share with you. And they're not as expensive as you, as you think. So what is? It's a very violent video.
It is a very violent video. It is. It's pretty rough.
But that's a full-size.
Yeah.
Fifteen-hundred half-ton Dodge Ram that got stopped in its tracks.
Didn't, didn't mow down people in a parade.
Goes up and twists around and comes down on the side.
And the, those units actually have a, the, the high part you see is actually the people gate. It actually is designed for people to walk through. Vehicles can't do it and they interlock so you can connect units together to, to cross a, a roadway. So what do we, what do we, equipment-wise, what do we need to, to achieve the objectives? One, additional eight-foot steel barricades. We'd need a thousand and fifty-four to completely barricade the, the route and eliminate the cables. Trailers for those, the trailers has a hundred and twenty capacity barricades per trailer. We'd need nine. And then to achieve mitigation barriers at Fairhope and both ends of section would require twelve units. And to look at the cost of, and, and I will tell you, I inflated the cost of steel barricades. I think the last time we bought them, they were right at a hundred bucks, but I just want to be a little conservative. And, and the more you order at a time, the cheaper the unit price gets. That's one of those things. But looking at about a hundred and fifteen thousand nine hundred and forty dollars to achieve that goal, trailers run about seventy-five hundred dollars each. That'd be sixty-seven thousand five hundred. And the mitigation barriers that you've seen in the video are thirty-five hundred dollars a unit. We would require twelve total for forty-two thousand. So a total cost to achieve our objectives to improve our, our parade route and barrier system, somewhere around two hundred and twenty-five thousand four hundred and forty dollars. And the biggest thing is, is that that one of the things that our EMA director, when he identified a problem and a concern, but he also identified a solution. He is interested in, in applying for a homeland security grant that could possibly cover a hundred percent of the cost of these. We would, we would become the possessors. We would maintain and store them in the city of Fairhope for our use and our purposes, but they would remain as a strategic shared resource of the county EMA, meaning that if there was a big shrimp festival in, in, in Gulf shores, they could come and, and check them out, use them and bring them back. If there was another event or something in the county, the EMA, it would be a shared resource, which I don't think is a bad, a bad deal. We, it doesn't cost us anything but the, the storage and maintenance of the, of the trailers and the equipment and have that available to address our concerns there. But that's kind of where we are. This is just kind of telling you what we see, what we think we need to get to and, and starting to pursue options for this council to, to get us there.
That's a little history. We have been, you know, buying them incrementally over time and trailers and barricades. And if that's something that you think we need to do, and every time you bring up safety, you know, if you're a council member, and once it's brought to your attention and you say no, you kind of cringe. So you hate to say no to safety. I would say that if it's something that you thought you needed immediately, and I don't know that we have any parades coming up, but if it's something that you needed in this budget year, I'd say get to cutting your budget by two hundred and twenty-five thousand. And I'd say if you need it next year, then find a way to put two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in your budget and present it.
And I think those are all, you know, the, the good news is the next parade that we're concerned about is Christmas. So we've got a little time on our side and, and there is a budget cycle between now and next Christmas. I, I think we may be coming back to you to ask a resolution of support for the EMA to apply for the grant if you, if you feel like that's a, a solution.
Start with do that.
And I don't think there's any downside to that.
There's no money.
And I don't think we would mind storing. We've got plenty of area to do that in and, and have it as a shared resource that we're just the caretakers of. You know, I, I think the other challenges are that if we can get to this objective, for us, it's an operational thing. The one beauty about the cables, we're very efficient and, and it, and we have it down pat. We've, and, and now all of a sudden, if you're talking about interlocking barricades, how much time does that take prior to the parade rolling and, and then the additional time to, to disassemble and to store them in a way that's, that's kind to our businesses and our residents downtown. The good news is on the setup, the only parade that that has a real financial impact is the Saturday since the, the other two are on workdays. And so if we start earlier, they're already on the clock anyway that, that money was committed to. But those are logistic things that we, we have some time to work out and we have known.
And Richard, I don't know what the other council member's philosophy is or the mayor's on this, but you know, when it comes to, if you have to have people working to put those barricades out and they have to be paid, I don't have a better problem with that. I mean, when you're looking at twenty thousand, you know, people participate in MMOR and sixty thousand, I mean, you've got, you know, some of that's overlap, but you've got, say, sixty thousand people that are coming downtown. I think that's enough of an economic impact to cover whatever overtime. We got to pay somebody to get out there and put those barricades up.
And y'all have been very generous there. That's not been an issue. It's just, it's just a logistical problem that we will have to work out. And, and again, trying to be as conscientious of the, the downtown business owners and everything else in that process. But just kind of wanted to kind of give you a briefing that, that it was a great Mardi Gras. But I think you, you kind of expect us to worry and so we, we, we worry about things.
Where do you put those vehicle barriers, vehicle mitigation barriers up? And the major roads coming into town, so, so nobody comes in at high speed.
You could use it for passing cars. I mean.
But it's happening around the country and other places.
And, and they're, they're literally a kind of a pin system. So they're, they, you know, workers can unload them off a trailer, pin them together. They, they basically just have a pin that goes into the, the asphalt that is the pivot point that you saw. And as you know, it had the leader leg. So once it hits, it picks up the vehicle. So it's a pretty.
That's got to be away from a crowd though, because once that thing got picked up, it could go anywhere.
Yeah, but it would be at your, you know, you'd have a delineation and, and try to have a dead space, you know, between there and where your, your crowds are congregating. But.
I'm kind of thinking like you'd have it more feet south of the church and the gas station there, behind that big crowd. They would have turned and made right there, places like that.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Maybe section right out here, you know, coming up the hill.
Any other questions about Mardi Gras? The moon pies were exceptionally fresh this year. I will just tell you that. So.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
All right. Discussion of lease purchase or purchase of golf carts for Quail Creek. Mr. Marks?
Good evening. How's everybody?
Hey, good.
Good, good. Thank you. I might, I might be the fun one for tonight because everybody's expecting me to come here asking for money to repair or replace our existing cart fleet. And I've got a nice plan that I think may cost us nothing. So I just want to give you.
Nice change of page.
Yeah, yeah.
Can we vote now? Can, can we go ahead and vote?
Sort of, kind of. Trying to be creative. So to, to give you a quick synopsis of where we are, we have a current fleet of seven, seventy easy-go golf carts that in the last four years did about a hundred and ten thousand rounds on. That's quite a bit. We're busy. Not only that, that's on pretty bad terrain with a lot of exposed roots over the ground, some rocky areas, some drop offs of cart paths. I mean, it's kind of a challenging situation for golf carts to get around. Our batteries are four years old. They're out of warranty and they're dying every day. For the last three weeks, we've been averaging about three and a half breakdowns on the golf course each day, which is creating a problem. Most every part on the golf carts are, are out of warranty. And we've had continuous problems with a selenoids failing, seats ripping, seat wooden frames are crumbling. They, they tend to rot when they get wet and, and that's hard to avoid since we have to clean golf carts and, and people play golf in the rain. The carts we have have two-piece cheap aluminum frames where sometimes when they hit a bump, even hit a tree root, the frames will bend. And Jeff can attest to that. We had a gentleman bump another gentleman's cart in, in his group during the summertime and it twisted the frame in two spots. And, and I asked how fast was the cart going? They said about five or six miles an hour. So kind of shows about the quality of, of the carts. And, you know, in my estimation, they've really, I hate to say, because I've had three fleets of easy-go carts over the years. I've had three Yamahas. I've had one club car. And the quality of easy-go has really gone downhill in my estimation. I had asked our repair technician, Johnny Rollins, a few times, what can we do about the selenoid problem? And his response was, we don't know. I said, do they have it in the plans to change out the selenoids and come up with a new one for, for the new year? And he said, I really don't know. We've got a major problem with tow bars. And tow, tow bars, as our golfers here know, are used to tow three, four carts at a time. And the tow bars are so wallowed out from towing on a pretty flat area that easy-go tells me they can't be repaired. And that's a problem. I've never seen that happen in twenty-eight years of being a golf pro. In my estimation, repairing the fleet is not a good option at all. I've got several quotes on battery replacement. We're looking at anywhere from eighty to a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars on batteries. And this is.
I want to step in right here and I have a quote, thirty-six thousand dollars for batteries.
Okay. Are they Trojan batteries?
They're not Trojan. They're interstate golf cart deep cycle. They're not going to have the, the hydroflow filling system. And I realize that may take more labor.
A lot more.
But, you know, they're one seventy a piece and not three fifty a piece. But I didn't get you the number on the, I wanted to have that number on how many year warranty those were.
Usually it's one on interstate.
And it may be, and that's, and I can't tell you that. I wish I had gotten that.
I know on US batteries, it's one, because I've done some research on that as well as far as finding out what the warranty is. And I think Trojan.
Trojans are usually.
Eighteen months on the Trojan batteries.
Yeah. But how many really quit in a year? I mean, is there that many batteries that go out in a year?
Well, we're, we're in year four right now and we've had a ton go out. I mean, they're out of warranty.
Yeah, well, four. I mean, I don't, I don't dispute they need to be replaced at all. I'm sure they're all.
But in one year with a new fleet, probably not too many at all. But I have a plan that may save you that kind of money.
I'll let you go. I'll let you go.
So.
I wanted to, I wanted to just put that number out there. When you, when you throw out eighty to a hundred and twenty thousand, I wanted to give the council another number that you want.
Well, Mr. Burrow, what that does is that includes installation, which, which can take fifty hours to do. You've got your battery rods, your replacement, your disposal of batteries. Jeff's crew is, you know, they're, they're not well-equipped to handle seventy cart changes for hydro links and batteries. It's kind of a tough job. Besides batteries, you know, I, I mentioned all the problems that we have. We've had eighty-five selenoids in our estimation go down in four years. They're getting older and older and older and they're just going to keep going down and get worse. And being out of warranty, they won't be covered at all. My estimation, very conservatively, to get this fleet up and running and just maintain, if we went my route with the batteries being installed by a supplier, we're looking at about a hundred and five grand for everything. And then over the next two years, probably one thirty-seven, one forty in total in, in repairs. And that's very conservative. If we went with a four-year lease, we were offered a fifty-four thousand dollar lease by Yamaha, which is sixty-four dollars per cart per month. And I have not seen those prices in twenty-five years. I, I can remember, I've done many cart leases. And I can remember twenty years ago, doing a four-year lease with club car and it was seventy-six dollars. And about twelve years ago, one with Yamaha in Georgia, and that one, I think I spent seventy-one. They're being so aggressive because they want to get their foot in the door and, and be able to be with Fairhope for a good long time. I think Yamaha honestly makes the best golf cart in the industry for the money. Mechanically, they're very, very sound. I've gone an entire year with a fleet of eighty carts and had never had one breakdown when I was in New York at Enjoy Golf Club. How we can pay for this, we do about twenty-seven thousand one hundred rounds of cart rentals per year. If we went up two dollars on our cart fees, and we can afford to do that, that'll pay for the entire annual lease.
I was going to ask you that. What, what is the current cart fee? I should know, but I just give them.
No, that's okay.
I just give them my mouth.
No, I don't expect you to know.
Don't know what I'm paying for.
No, it's seventeen.
Twenty?
No, no, seventeen. And I looked at seven or eight golf courses in Baldwin County and I saw fees anywhere from eighteen to twenty-five. Most golf courses that are kind of on par with what we have to offer, they're around nineteen. So if we went to nineteen, we're right with the competition. That two-dollar increase pays for the, for the entire annual lease on the carts.
What is it at Timber Creek? Did you get that number?
It was eighteen or nineteen.
I don't think if somebody's looking to play golf somewhere though, they go, well, it's eighteen for the cart here and nineteen there, so let's go to eighteen.
No, yeah, no, not really.
History's ever done that, I don't think.
No, I mean, they might, I mean.
If it's fifteen versus fifty, they may or.
Yeah, exactly. I was going to say, if we're on the high end of that group at twenty-five, people would balk. But to go to eighteen or nineteen, I don't think anybody would. So, you know, I think if you went with a purchase, I mean, a purchase of carts is somewhere around three hundred and eight thousand dollars or so. It may be slightly cheaper if you did a, just one payment per year. I think on a annual lease, you're looking at somewhere around two-twenty or so, two-eighteen, two-twenty for four-year lease. I think it's kind of six or one-half dozen on expenses because if you do purchase, after four years, you've got seventy carts with really bad batteries and problems. And the average cart value after four years is about fourteen hundred dollars. That's according to Yamaha's sales department. And that's what I've seen in my past too, from trying to sell cars. So are you really going to sell all seventy? Will you really sell all seventy? Who knows?
Do a piece mill to get that price probably.
Exactly. And then some of those.
We talked about that when we purchased them, to be honest. We thought that, we knew we were going to have a lot of carts to dispose of. And we thought, well, you may sell some five at a time, six at a time, maybe get lucky and sell a fleet. But it would be more individual.
Right, right. I mean, that's how I feel too.
But we could do it.
To avoid that, to avoid that problem, if you had the annual lease.
We have that problem out. Even if we need to lease a new fleet, we got, we have that problem. We've got seventy carts we have to sell.
So.
But what's a offset cost too? Fortunately, that'll offset a lot of cost.
It would, sure, sure.
That'll pay for, I don't know, roughly a year and a half of a lease.
Mm-hmm.
Maybe even a little more, maybe close to two years.
It sure would. Definitely.
So you got, you know, we were thinking at the time, 1,500 a cart, I believe, roughly resold. I believe your number. I didn't research it.
Yeah, we're pretty close.
It's 1,400, 1,500, 1,200.
Yeah.
You know, and it's going to probably vary between carts.
It will, definitely.
So when was the last time we had a cart fee increase out there?
Been quite a while. It might go as far back as when we did the last pass holder increase back in 14 or 15.
I'm not even sure we raised cart. Lynn, have you researched that?
It was 16.
About four years.
Four years.
I think when we were at 16...
You think we did increase cart fees?
I think we were 16 at one point in time. And I think we just went up a dollar to 17.
It went up with the new carts four years ago.
It did go up with the new carts four years ago, a dollar.
I think it was a dollar.
That's the reasonable time to be increasing cart fees anyway, when you bring it into the fleet.
Yeah. Well, and it may be, when you were talking about that, too, I was kind of thinking, and it may have been the same way I was thinking four years ago, well, you do have an expense of a cart. If you try to go up too much just to make it a net zero, you know, is that fair to the golfer? Because, you know, let's just say you got 50% of that offset. You're still...
Yeah.
You're still way ahead of the game.
Right. Then your annual lease is going to be 27,000.
Yeah, because you are renting it for...
Yeah, which is still...
Whatever it is you're renting it for, which is paying for, well, everything from carts to course maintenance. But I don't know that I would have to be convinced to raise it to a level that made it a net neutral, to use Robert's favorite term.
It just happens that way.
But yeah, but I mean, if you wanted to, we could. What do y'all think? I just cut to the chase. I mean, that's, I think he's made his plea there.
I think you might as well.
Golf courses lose money anyway, so.
Well, we'll continue.
You can claw a little bit more back. Why not?
How many rentals a year?
27,000.
So 54,000 a year? We got to get these things ordered like, what, two weeks ago?
Yeah, exactly. Yes.
It would be nice to have a fee.
Is that via ordinance, Lisa? Is that fee via ordinance?
You have to do, is it a lease or is it a bid? Was it a bid lease?
It was. I've got, I've got a bid on purchasing and also a bid on a lease.
It has to be by resolution. You have to award it by resolution.
I'd be in favor of the lease with this, which is what you prefer to.
Yes, sir. I do.
I think it makes it easier, too, to end the four years. You don't have 70 carts to try to eliminate and get rid of and store somewhere and try to sell them.
Is that something that we need to walk on tonight?
That's why I asked if it was an ordinance or a resolution. I mean, there's a, you know, we can do a handshake that we're going to put it on the next agenda. You might could go ahead and order them. I mean, there's nothing, we've done that. If we sit here and the principal says it's going to happen, or we could go in and formally do it today.
It doesn't need to award the bid.
We could award the bid. Can you get us information quick enough for the meeting?
Yes, ma'am.
No question.
I can either do the...
Give your excuse to get that, cause copies.
I'd ask Jay if he's okay with it.
Jay, well, it's a resolution.
It's been 35 minutes really not to do the resolution.
It's a resolution. So you don't have to suspend the rules to...
No, strictly a resolution.
But do you have to have a unanimous vote to walk it on? You do, don't you?
Yes.
Jay, what's your pleasure?
I am in favor of golf carts.
Are you in favor of racing rates? Now, we can put that off to the next meeting.
He's in good mood. He's telling you.
Yes, yes.
I'll tell you what. I'll buy you a razor if you'll let me ask. Let's see how it's worked, Jeff. Jeff, if you'd have known, you could have shown up with a razor.
Jay, I can pay for your next golf cart rental when you come out personally. I'm kidding. I'm just teasing.
It's under $25.
Just trying to add some levity. I'm kidding.
Okay. All right. Okay, let's get a quick poll. We good with that?
No.
Wasn't that easy?
It was.
If I'd have just ever put this thing on the agenda and the mayor wouldn't have to get on to it, then we'd be done with this, wouldn't we? Shay, give the mayor?
Yes.
Okay. All right, smile.
I'm internally smiling and doing something else.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
All right. Now come up with a plan to sell those carts.
Yes, sir. Will do.
Yeah, the gov. deals may sell them too quick. I mean, I'd meter them out. All right. Councilman, Jay, committee updates? Okay. Jim?
No update.
Robert?
No update.
Let's see. We had an airport authority meeting. We're still wrangling over some hangers, possibly down the southwest corner. We still got someone that's interested in maybe potentially putting a business out there. It's been talked about. That would be a really clean business that involves pilot training, mostly via simulator time. So they'll be putting in, you know, nice, clean simulators. It would include some flight time, but not anything, you know, more than, you know, a couple of flights a week. But anyway, it's kind of interesting and airport authorities looking at that. I just returned today. I got back this afternoon from the Electric Cities Conference, Electric Cities of Alabama. It was in conjunction with the APPA Conference in DC. Since none of us could make the National League of Cities Conference this year, it was a good opportunity to try to get up there and put Fair Hope in front of our elected officials in Washington. And we met with Senator Shelby. We met with Senator Jones' staff. He was at a Democratic Party retreat, wasn't there. And we met with, we did not meet with Congressman Byrne. We met with his staff, but we met with Congresswoman Roby, Congressman Palmer, Congressman Rogers, Congressman Brooks. And I may be leaving out one. I don't think Congresswoman, let's see, Sewell was not there. I think that was it. But it was all a pretty productive meeting and we were pushing what we need for our electric utility, Fair Hope Utilities. So they're there to lobby and try to persuade the decision makers of what's in the best interest of our municipal electric company. So we do that. My mind's still spinning since I just got home at probably a couple hours before the meeting. In fact, Councilman Boone went. He was stuck in DC last I heard, so didn't make it back. That's what you get for booking a direct flight. I think that's it. Department heads? Oh, Lynn, I put you and Pat below department head updates. Does anybody have any real pressing? I want, I would like to try to get to those agenda items for them. But if, does anybody have anything pressing? Okay, come forward. Yeah, come forward if you would.
Items 2 and 11. I'm high. 585.
We're not going to spend anywhere near that. I thought about throwing it out. Only one person bid on it. We were on schedule this year to spend about 420. We're always somewhere right around 500 or less to not exceed bid. So I didn't want anybody to be alarmed that it's not over budget. We're not going to spend that money. The other one, turned out it was over budget. If you remember, about six months ago, we had to repair well seven under emergency conditions. It cost us about $46,000. We asked at the time, did we think that that would be good for the next two? Everybody agreed. There was two vendors that said they thought $50,000 a piece would do it. Turns out, the price of steel has gone through the roof. So it came in much higher. So we're only going to do one right now and I'll see if I can find the money for the other. So combined, we had $100,000. Well, eight, the one we're asking for tonight is the oldest one. It's never been rebuilt. So we'd like to take the total $100,000. We won't need all of it. We'll need 82 of it, with your blessing.
So it was originally budgeted, the $100,000 was budgeted for...
Two.
For two wells or number two and eight, number one and eight?
Number one and eight, yes. We'll come up with the money for the number one out of the existing budget. I'll eliminate something else. We haven't had time to go over yet to see.
So it literally came in about 35,000 or more than what we were expecting. You were anticipating 50,000 a piece and it came in 85.
Yeah, we talked to the vendors. They were thinking, you know, because we repaired it under emergency conditions, we thought that we'd be well within it. But...
I'll be honest with you. I really don't like the way the green sheet's done when it shows it's a budget of 100 and this shows it is 17,000 under budget. I'm glad you explained that. You're honest.
That's why I came in to say that.
To me, it should be 35,000 over, not 1,600.
That's why I'm here.
Okay.
And no, I only want the one done.
Okay, okay.
You have any questions on that? That's why I came here with my hat in my hand.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Does anybody else have anything pressing so we could get to maybe these last couple of work session items? Lynn?
I'll defer to Pat because mine's a bit longer than she's got mine.
Okay. Well, that's kind of why I put them at the end. I knew, just to get through what we got through and you'd take up the whole agenda meeting was going to be.
No, I know. And I'm prepared to wait to the next one.
Okay.
I'll be really brief. Brought to my attention...
This is number eight, by the way.
John Saracino brought this to my attention several months ago. He had some grandchildren playing at our soccer complex one evening and lightning storm came up and he was fearful of children and everybody trying to clear out of the complex with lightning striking. Didn't have adequate notice. So he and I met with a company that does lightning prediction system that we could set up to monitor basically citywide at all of our sports complexes. The golf course right now does not have an operational system. So we are totally reliant on human element right now to notify people when lightning is in the area. And of course, the only way we can do that is if we visibly see it, right? So by then, it may be too late. So anyway, you know, I'm looking at this system. They said 97% of the time, the alarm is activated, lightning is visible within 15 to 30 minutes. So there's adequate time to let everybody know to clear the complex, get in safe shelter. The monitors range up to a 25-mile radius. It predicts lightning before it strikes within two and a half miles. The areas I would like to look at are all these sports complexes, Quail Creek, of course, in our beach and, you know, bayfront property areas where we have, you know, public citizens out in settlements when storms roll up. So, you know, I just wanted to bring this to your attention to see, you know, if we could find some common ground on it before I brought this gentleman in to speak to you about the, you know, specifics of it. We're looking at probably a 50 to 60,000 investment to cover the city as a whole. And then it's $1,000 per year to have the app working for us. So...
That's probably less than what I thought it was going to be, Pat.
Yeah, I was somewhat surprised by that myself.
I kind of tell you what I told, you know, when we were talking about barricades, I'd say the same thing. Once again, it's my opinion. I don't speak for anybody else. But I say, you know, if you need it this year, if you need it now, what you going to cut out of your budget?
Right.
Or if you need it next year, put in a budget. And we can move ahead on that if we have to, as we're coming up into the summer, the lightning season. I mean, it's upon us, really, probably March.
Right.
It's another safety issue. It's the same argument that we made with the barricades. But, you know, you can't squeeze blood out of a truck either.
Act on it, yeah. It is a safety issue. I think we've all been at the park when lightning has hit and it's, it's pretty nerve-wracking to see people scramble to their cars, you know.
There's this, you know, estimate include audible warnings?
Yes, sir. So basically, we would have what they call a pod at each site. And it sounds a horn and it also has a strobe light that continuously blinks while there's an alert.
And if you put it, say, at Valanta, how many of those would you have to place around the park?
Just one at Valanta. So it lets everybody in a 700-yard radius know.
So you put that thing like on the stadium, right by the stadium somewhere?
Right.
And get everybody from the top of the hill to, I guess that'd be the tee off hill, far point. Council? What else? There others?
I'm interested to hear.
Okay. The gentleman is in Louisiana. I can have him come to a work session if you like.
Yeah, be good.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Pat. Lynn, can we postpone? You sure?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. No offense.
It's only bringing in more money.
Okay. All right. We're adjourned.